Important decisions that will affect the city of Gadsden. And again, thank you for blessing this city. Pray that we'll keep our focus on you and our mind on you in all we do. We'll give you the praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
War eagle. You're going to get put out of here.
Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Safety Committee meeting, work session, and council meeting on January the 10th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve the minutes.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of January the 6th through the 12th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclaimations, Mayor.
No.
Unfinished business. A is an ordinance adopting 2009 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It regulates the conditions and maintenance of all properties, buildings, and structures to ensure safe, sanitary, and fit conditions for occupation and use. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
This is a time and place for a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 407 Avalon Lane in District 2. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Kim Parker, and Mid-Ohio Securities Corporation. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. We started this case in May of 2010. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak in favor of it? I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 403 Elmwood Avenue in District 2. The last known owners are Hope Annett Kitchens, Bowling Stevens, and Jason Dean Kitchens. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor?
Mr. President, this case involves a house. I think when you look at the picture, you'll see that it's not a tree house, but rather a house with a tree in it. We started it in May of last year. One of the recent storms caused a tree to fall. There have been no improvements to the property, no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1106 Brentwood Drive in District 3. The last known owners are the state of Alabama, Clifford Spade, and First Family Financial Services. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started working this case in January of last year. There have been no improvements to the property. There are no permits to improve, and we're asking for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, we've been working this for a long time, Brian, and I know the next-door neighbors and the people in the community is going to appreciate this one coming down, so we thank.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 519 Turntown Avenue in District 5. The last known owners are Dr. J.J. Davis and Armand Davis, his trustees for the Davis Family Trust, and Jerome Paul Davis. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Yes.
Would you please come forward to the microphone? State your name and address for the... City Clerk, please.
Jerome Paul Davis. Howdy. I live in Harpersville, Alabama.
Okay.
Responding to y'all's recent way of talking about other problems, a permit has been pulled on the house. I've spent roughly $10,000 on the exterior of the house in the last three years. Unless you trespass or enter the property without my permission, none of the issues in this current citation are applicable.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, this case involves property located in the Turntown Historic District. We've worked it in the past. Same problems are back again. There was a building permit stated by the previous gentleman that was obtained back in December last month. Been some improvements. We certainly don't... We're not objecting to any improvements being made to the property because of the nature of the historic society and the special case that you have to go through in working a case of this nature. We're asking for a resolution today in order to receive bids to rehab the exterior of this house in connection with our exterior rehab program. This case would also have to be approved by the... Or any rehab work would have to be approved by the Turntown Historic Committee. So there are a couple of steps to take. But what we're asking for today is a resolution to be passed, giving us the authority to move forward in case the owner fails to comply with what he stated today. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it?
Yes.
Would you come to the microphone, please? State your name and address for the... City Clerk.
I am Collins Tackeberry. Reside at 632 Turntown Avenue. I am on the board of directors of the Homeowners Association. And what I'd like to do is just read a petition that has been signed by the majority of the homeowners and present it to the... For the council as evidence, that's all. Help us preserve the downtown Gadsden, Alabama. We think that the attractive character of our street is threatened by poor maintenance, neglect, and indifference to the local city ordinances. As such, we each are threatened by unnecessary visual blight with resulting challenges to property sales and reduced property values. We, the undersigned, think that the property located at 519 Turntown Avenue in Gadsden, Turntown Historic District, falls under the Failure to Maintain Properties section of the city code. As such, this historic property's condition constitutes a change for which a certificate of appropriateness is necessary. Therefore, the Architectural Review Board and the residents of this street feel that the property must be updated to meet the standards set forth by the ARB and any applicable standards set forth by the city code.
Thank you, sir.
And I only have one question also. If this does proceed and the city goes ahead and makes the repairs to the exterior and such, will the residents have to be removed to do this? Does anybody answer that? We have one resident there now, and we have one business in the apartment.
If she'll answer you.
Quick answer, Larry.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I have a question.
My understanding is there is one of the three units that is occupied. This would be and constitute only exterior work, so there would be no need for the tenant to be vacated because it's, you know, no work would be done on the interior of the house, if that's your question.
Yeah, I have another question. If you want to pass this, we're passing it for the whole unit?
For the exterior of the structure.
For the exterior of the structure. Okay.
Gentlemen, excuse me. May I respond? Just maybe, Clerk, I... Exactly.
Where does it place with the council?
Sheriff, lady of town.
Yeah, I have a right.
As the owner of this obvious ISO work, I'd just like to define what I've done to maintain the exterior of the structure. In the last couple of months, lightning hit one of the chimneys and took about two or three foot of the top of it down and caused some damage to the roof. Immediately upon finding this out, I had it repaired and had the entire integrity of the roof, requiring a number of shingles to be replaced, punted all the chimneys, and caulked any areas that appeared to be or might in the future because of drying and cracking, leak. About two years ago, I spent $2,500 repairing the upper front screened-in porch structure by pointing all of the joists and repairing all of the fascia. About three and a half years ago, I spent $4,500 removing the columns, replacing the deck, reinforcing the concrete underneath. The resident that lives in the apartment now has been there roughly six years. Someone's personal opinion and without a clear and concise written set of standards, someone's personal opinion should not now or ever determine how somebody who owns a piece of property should care for that property. If all of these residents who sign this petition had issue, I'm easy to find. I don't wake up every day looking for the opportunity to be a bad property owner, to be a bad neighbor, or to be a nuisance. Mr. Harbison and I go back a long way. We've not always seen eye to eye, but generally, at the end of the day, whatever issue is there is resolved. I still have another issue to resolve. But I take personal offense at someone who lives on the property. By the way, my mauder and Hattie dear built that house and the house next door when those streets were clay and dirt. So to even imply that I don't have a vested interest or care, a little shallow. So anyone on the council, anyone in the Building Department, anybody living on the street, has any issues with anything I'm doing or plan on doing, all you have to do is call. I would beg the council's indulgence while repairs are made to the house as seen fit and are necessary and to just leave me alone so I can do them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
If you do allow him to make the repairs and such, is there a timetable on that?
He comes to the mic.
Question was asked, is there a timetable? Actually, the timetable has expired, and that's why we're here today.
That's what I thought.
I'm Belinda Tackeberry, and I'm at 632 Turntown. Question that I have is, we were under the... When we purchased our home four and a half years ago, that everything was single-family residence with the exception of that one large apartment complex. When did this single-family home become apartments? Or is it legal apartments or illegal apartments?
I'll be glad to answer that. About 1935 during the depression.
It's...
It's been grandfathered in?
Well, I would assume it's been grandfathered in because as long as I can remember, it's It's been not a single family. And when that became a historic district, it was... It had always got three apartments in it, if I remember correctly.
Yes, as a matter of fact, there used to be a C-room at the downstair called Turntown Avenue 2, and that could be a commercial business.
But wouldn't that fact be... Would they be grandfathered in forever now that it's single-family residence to do anything they want to, even commercial businesses?
It's not a single-family residence.
It may only be one person living in it. Is that what you're saying?
It's legal to have a business in it.
I really don't know. You'll have to ask... Can you answer that?
Sure. This property is owned residential. It's not... There wouldn't be any type of business allowed there. There are some home occupation certificates that are issued by the Revenue Department for some private 25% gross square foot limit. But generally, these are going to be accountants, attorneys, a one-chair beauty shop, something that's operated in the home. But other than that, no commercial business would be licensed at this location.
But they still have to get a variance to do that, don't they, now?
That's correct.
I'm just curious about the surveying business on Parrows, which is also a very separate district, whether they have a variance and a permit to have a home-based business or something like that. And again, I simply say that unless you're trespassing, I don't really see how any of this knowledge becomes public enough to say that you don't have permit knocking on somebody's door, that's what you're doing. But again, as the owner of the property, you wanted one of them to ask me anything.
You want to answer that, please?
Mr. Kirby.
Would you let Mr. Kirby?
I'd just say, why don't we let Mr. Kirby answer?
Okay.
We can be going back and forth all day. The exact question is, can you operate a business in your home in an R1 district or historical district or whatever district?
The only way would be as a home occupation. Otherwise, it would have had to continue without no more than six-month interruption since it's been in inception. Apparently, it's not continued on in that capacity.
May I just submit that I'm reasonably certain there's no construction in or land that is taking any disruption?
Okay.
Coffee question.
Okay. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
This resolution that we're going... That I'm going to ask that we approve is to give the land owner... A property owner some additional time to do the repairs necessary. And it'd have to be... Is that not correct, Brian? Are we going to give him a little more time to make the repairs necessary?
Typically, in a case like this, Mr. Stewart, you would need to ask that the case be tabled in order to give the owner an opportunity to work. If you pass a resolution, that gives the city the opportunity to go to the next step, which we can't do without going through the Turntown Historic Review Board anyway. So it's up to you.
In light of the petition that I see and the history of this being rental property over a long period of time, that I ask that we approve the resolution.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Clerk, will you take your seat?
I just want to understand it from Brian so he'll know what's going on. Once we approve this, then the city will go in and do the exterior or what?
No. What will happen with a resolution today, we will go out and write specs on what we consider to be the work that needs to be done to the exterior of the property. And of course, those specs have to be approved by the Turntown Historic Review Committee, which is the next step. During this time of the process, the owner can continue to make repairs and could even abate the nuisance, at which time what you're doing today is kind of an act of mercy.
Okay. He just needs to understand.
You need to get with him and...
May I just have one more moment?
One more. One more.
Well, it may take ten, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to find out exactly what this moving target...
Why don't you give...
...personal opinion means to what I have to do and what I don't have to do. I have one more simple question.
Who will answer that?
What's the question?
Brian Harbison needs to...
I guess he has to do it. The understanding...
At first, Mr. Harbison mentioned that they just wanted permission pre-granted, assuming that I'm not going to abate a moving target nuisance. And whether or not I abate that or not is of issue, whether or not I can abate it based on the invisibleness of the rules. So what I have in front of me is the 825 11 inspection that was made by the city. So what I would like to do is look at this and determine what on this is based on the exterior and just be given a clear, concise plan of action to make sure that what I'm doing complies with what I'm going to be judged on.
That's what he just said he's going to do.
No, sir. I have it right here.
No, 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 no. That's what they're going to do now if we pass this.
But what's this, Mr. Councilman? I mean, it's simply...
The inspection sheet here is broken into two sections, one exterior and one interior.
Yes.
Interior does not apply to this hearing today, only the exterior.
And as long as I understand that the two items out of 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10 are cited, I just don't want to go down a path that never has a resolution. That's all. It says here, windows broken, open, not provided. Well, there's one window that's broken in the back, and it's not out. It's just there's a small fracture in it. I can get that fixed. Exterior doors, which I don't know, but looking over here in the remarks section, it says windows painted shut. Well, the house built in 1911, probably has a few windows that are painted shut, and I can fix that. Rear door not secure. Basically, it was open, not closed. Overgrown shrubs and vines. Well, show me a rule where the definition of how westerrier, which grows somewhat fast, is supposed to be pruned. And whose idea of overgrown are we going to use?
Mr. President, I think we can... Like I said, we can be here all day.
Sure.
I think what Mr. Harbison said, and I don't want to put words in his mouth, he's going to go back out, he's going to present something to the design review, and based on whatever they say is what's got to be done. So that paper, don't even worry about that.
Yes, he should.
So I'm not to worry about this paper?
Not necessarily, because they're going to come back with some... They're going to come back with what needs to be done exactly. Am I correct, Brian?
That's right.
Okay, that's what I thought.
So the design review board is going to tell me what I have to do to make the house presentable on a completely ambiguous set of facts and personal opinions? I'm just wanting clarification, because there is no written set of guidelines as to what has to be done to comply. I personally don't like the fact that somebody's personal opinion is going to override mine, but I'm willing to live with it as long as I know what's acceptable and what's not acceptable.
Has he not listed on there on the exterior? And that's all we're talking about, the exterior? The repairs that need to be made on the exterior? Yeah, well, that's all. Do those, and you're fine.
But the design review board is...
No.
They're going to...
That's what the law is.
They're going to approve the changes you need to make there.
So if I paint the windows, make sure that they all open?
Whatever he's got on his list there.
No, that's not true. It could be something different. See, he's trying to block us in.
No, sir. No, sir, Mr. Councilman. I'm just trying to...
You're trying to block us in to tell you today what needs to be done, and we can't do that because he's got to go before a board. When he goes before the board, then they come back and tell you, then come back and talk to us.
No, that's not true. I don't think that's accurate, is it?
No, the board only approves the plan that you have to make on your exterior. If you're making paint changes or whatever the changes are, even shrubbery changes, the review board has to approve it. So you just present that to the review board, what you're going to do.
Okay.
And Brian has listed what he needs to do there to get the place up.
Yeah, but the design review board is going to...
If he'll do that, he's got no problem. Just do what's on that list.
But see, what we're telling him today is if he do what's on that list, he think he's going to be okay. He's going to come back if the design review board says something different and say, well, we lied to him. In essence, we did. I don't know what they're going to say, but whatever the design review board says is going to be the law. Am I correct, Brian?
No, no. The review board doesn't go out and say, you've got to do this and that to your house.
No, I said, what they...
When you want to make a change, you present that to the review board, and they either approve it or disapprove it.
Brian is going to make the change suggestions. The design review board will approve what needs to be changed.
Right, right.
That's what I just said. I thought.
But it's not necessarily what's on his list.
It's not necessarily what's on his list.
Gentlemen, I have had this same discussion a number of times, and I understand that you find yourselves in a dilemma. And it's a tough job, and I appreciate your position, and I hope that you don't think I'm here to be antagonistic. I'm simply trying to find out what I have to do as there appears to be a somewhat of a moving target.
He's going to tell you what you have to do.
And we can't tell you.
And that's it.
Make a motion, we approve the abatement.
That's already a motion.
I don't think we had a second.
You have a discussion?
We do.
No, we didn't.
I think we discussed it enough, so let's go. It was too much.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property at 2328 Hill Avenue in District 6. The last known owners are the state of Alabama and Paula... The last known owners are the State of Alabama and Paula Whiteport Remsley. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor?
This thing isn't going to be long, is it, Brian?
I'm sorry. This, this one should go pretty quick. We, we started this case in June, been no improvements, no permits. We're asking for a resolution to abate.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Our next public hearing is a resolution...
We've got a vote.
Okay.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, our next public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Cash Saver located at 325 North Third Street. This is a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for Pure Station located at 210 East Meagan Boulevard. This is for a retail beer and table wine license off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it? Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Pronounce that name. I'm kidding. Move along.
I couldn't.
That name.
I'm lost now, you got me out.
I'm sorry, I threw you out.
He wanted you to pronounce the name of the person who's getting the license.
Oh, Hickey.
It's a name none of us can pronounce, though.
Is this a Pure Station?
Yes.
Okay.
I think the owner's back there, if he wanted to pronounce his name, I guess.
Okay.
I don't see you.
Enough of that.
That's the other one.
No, no, right there, he's right there. You, you're the one, right? What's your name?
Green Want.
Say that again?
Green Want, Joey O'Neal.
Okay.
Very good.
Appreciate that.
Let's vote, move on.
Okay.
We got a vote.
I know we got a vote, if we, we got a motion and, and a second.
Yeah, we got a motion and a second.
Okay, take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I hope you're successful in that, stay there for a long time.
Even though we can't pronounce your name.
Resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E, this is to prepare a new best management practices plan for the city's landfill and transfer station. The amount is $1,750. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, we need to get a new plan, I'm glad we're getting one. My case is closed.
Is there any other? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Seventeen is a resolution authorizing agreement with S and M E. This is to perform professional services required as part of the permit conditions from A D M. It includes gas and groundwater monitoring at the city's closed land, sanitary landfill, as well as gas and stormwater runoff monitoring at the city's C and D landfill. Chairman, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I'd like to make an amendment that the cost be, oh, no, I'm sorry, I can't do that right now.
We could.
That's okay.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Eighteen is a resolution authorizing annual service agreement with Motorola. This is for the city's radio station, and the amount is $10,161.99 per month. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Nineteen is a resolution authorizing agreement with the Gazzan Junior Golf Association. This is for the city's sponsorship from March through August, and the amount is $4,500. Chair, entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
The first reading, this is amending fiscal year 2012 budget. This is to reflect receipts of funds from Homeland Security, 2011 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for two EKG monitor defibrillators. Chairman, entertain a motion to...
Mr. President.
No, this was presented the other day for the first reading.
Mr. President, I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this resolution today.
Second.
The ordinance today, I'm sorry.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business, is there any new business?
Mr. President, I have a resolution I'd like to ask for unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution rejecting bid 3194 by Black Hawk Construction, an amount of $68,194 for the revalidation of, of the 14 Turntime Avenue, and allowing the contract to be rebid.
Second.
You need to have consent to consider.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Now, that's for approval.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is a house on Turntime that's, we're going to rebid. The bid was just too high for the amount of work that needs to be done, and we certainly intend to go ahead and do this work, but we're going to get some more bids on it, get the price down properly.
Is there any other? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Mr. President, I have two items I would like to ask for unanimous consent, consent to consider today. The first document is a resolution awarding bid number 3180 to McCartney Construction Company for the construction of a right-hand turn lane at the intersection of Hood Avenue and East Broad Street.
Second.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, this will, this will help us to take care of that terrible place that we have at the intersection of Hood and East Broad, where people have been complaining tremendously about the fact that there's a big hole there, and just a mess. So all of the preliminary work has been done, and Chad promises us that this should not take very long, once we approve this resolution today.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. The second item is, is legal department document number 2012029, is a resolution author, awarding the bid to landscape maintenance for the golf course, for the Nakalula Falls miniature golf course.
Second.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I think that covers the Wile Life Park, Jim Martin, the golf course, Nakalula Falls, landscaping all around.
Yes.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any other new business?
I got one, Mr. President, go ahead with mine if you don't mind.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'd like to ask unanimous consent, it's legal department, 2012/024, please. It's a resolution authorizing the offer of awarding an amount of $500 for information on the vandalism of the restrooms at Banks Park and U Activities Center.
Second.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move to adopt, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, they are. You know, it's getting a shame when we set up here and we have to offer rewards to somebody that's trying to tear up a new building that's been there less than probably a year. The city's redone all of Banks Park down there. We did away with on-street parking, it's off-street parking. You got people going there now, trying to kick in outside restroom doors, kick those off the hinges, and they've been set on fire three times, and luckily, nothing's happened to the building. So maybe on this reward that we're offering, we'll find out who's doing it, and we get to the bottom of it.
Could I, could I say something? It's, it's down there in Walnut Park, and it's also happened over at Donahue on the playground, set some of the playground equipment for the kids on fire. They did up at Mitchell Elementary. They've done that in several places in North Gazzan a couple of years ago. And, you know, people know who it is, and we're going to give a reward, and I assure you, if they're underage, we're going to go for the parents and let them pay for it, because, you know, we spend a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money, trying to make everything nice as we can for the people in all the communities, and then you let people go out and do things like this.
Chairman, I want to say too, and I agree with you totally on that, you mentioned Mitchell School, and we're going to talk about Dwight Park in Alabama City. In lieu of putting money into something I was going to do this morning, I'm going to suggest my money go toward cameras. I'm going to work on that, because when they do it, they just got to be notified that from now on, they're on camera, we going to come get you. And it's just that simple. The police department right now is on it, but they're kind of hampered, but I can assure you that over a period of time, it's going to show up, and they're going to get them. But I think the camera chief would shorten that period of time, and we'd go ahead and get them quickly. Thanks. Yeah.
Okay, is there any other? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, who's next?
I didn't have it, Billy, I'm sorry. I left it, if I did, I left it up there, because I thought you were going to take it.
I do. Mr. President, I have several here. The first one is a resolution granting right-of-way easement for Alabama power in order to extend utilities at the Nakalula Road, at the Nakalula Falls Playground. So I'd ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider the resolution today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I'd ask for approval. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, Roger, is these three separate ones, or they all? They're three separate ones, so I need to do them three separately. Okay, I, I, I know I can adopt them all at one time, but I need to act on them separately. At this time, I would ask for unanimous consent to consider three different resolutions here. One is to, to deal with the school warrants series 1212A, the general obligation warrants 1212B, and the tax exempt general obligation warrants series 1212C. I'd ask for unanimous consent to consider all three. Second.
Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to consider all three ordinances today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, a motion carries for unanimous consent.
Okay, make a motion that we approve all three, really. We could do all three at the same time. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, basically, what we're doing here, you know, we've talked about it and talked about going back into the bond market and, and see what we could get our present value savings out of these three different issues. And all we're doing here today is giving the go-ahead to, for the bond counselors and the investment banking firm to go ahead and sell those bonds. Hopefully, within the next week to seven days, they should be out there on the market, and then we will know at that point in time how much of present value savings that we will be able to receive. We did put a trigger mechanism in at 3%, so I can almost guarantee it won't be less than a half a million dollars, but hopefully, it'll be somewhere more closer to a million dollars savings that we'll be able to generate out of this.
Any other discussion? Clerk, you take the vote.
Those in favor to adopt all three ordinances, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all three ordinances.
You got any more?
Ah, that's it for me.
Okay. Marched by the mayor and the council. Mayor, you want to start? Okay, he wants to be last, he's got to think about it now.
Oh, he want to take a posh out of there, by the way. You better get it first.
Got to gather up a few more nerves.
You say it, Dave.
Oh, you're deferring to me? Am I your second choice? Okay. I'm dead serious about the cameras. I guarantee you, I've had problems at Dwight, the bathrooms, through the years, down at Hastings Park, chief, we had to remove the bathrooms because they tore them all to pieces so many times. So I think it's time to really do something about it. Break-ins in cars and all this sort of thing, it happened in my district up on, on the mountain. I would just ask people to please, please, roll up your windows and lock your doors. That's the first thing you have to do. In the houses, my understanding, also, here we go again, chief, they just kick the door down and come on in. I know what I want to tell everybody to do, and I think they know me well enough to know that that's what they probably should do. In fact, tote one every day if you have to. We'll put a stop to this crap, really. I'm getting tired of it. But I had, a few years ago, Sherman, I had one walk in my house, and me sitting at the table. What they didn't know was, my wife had a gun. And when she pointed at him, he ran. Of course, I was in fear of my life, she might have hit me. She never fired him. But I can tell you, the presence, the presence of a weapon sometime will change folks' minds. It'll get them back to reality. Okay? So I'm not advocating that you shoot anybody, but at least protect yourself. I think that's the big thing. I want to give some recognition this morning. I noticed Highway 411, they finally going to go up there and cut the weeds and get busy back, getting that done. But I want to give recognition to J.R. Countryman. J.R. pushed that and pushed it through the MPA. And what I basically want to say is, the day that they finish it, I want us all to go up there and see it, because I guarantee you, J.R. will be right there. I guarantee you, he'll be there. I guarantee you, he'll be there. So I just wanna let y'all know I appreciate the hard work he did to get it done. I appreciate the work that the, the people here got onto the governor. I understand a few weeks ago, and he didn't know about it, but he did, they got through talking to him. So, it's, it's, it's gonna be a reality, and I appreciate it so much for that.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do wanna reiterate what I talked about Banks Park a while ago. We will catch ya. It's just a matter of time, you just keep on, you will be caught, and you will be brought before the city judge, and we'll go fair, your parents will. If you're underage, they'll be up here with you, so that's why everyone know that. And it seems that this past weekend, around Alabama City, we had a bunch of folks decided, they wanted to come up and paint the roads white with words that shouldn't be there. And our public works department's working on that this morning, hopefully getting it off. And the rocks up at Dwight Park, they got up there and they rode all over it this weekend, stuff that shouldn't have been there, and we're up there hopefully today getting all that off. If we catch you destroying any city property, anything like that, I guarantee you, we're going after you. If you wanna paint something, there's a bunch of houses that older people probably be glad if you'd come and help them paint their house, or paint insides, just get with me. I can find you some people that like their house painted inside, I guarantee you, if you're gonna do it free.
We'll furnish the paint.
We'll furnish the paint, and the brushes, right, Mayor? So if you just got the urge, you gotta paint something, just contact one of us, and we'll put you in the right direction, start your painting. That's all I got.
Along the same lines there, you know, the citizens of Gadsden spend about five million dollars on parks and recreation every year, try to provide facilities that are nice in our parks and... If somebody come in and, for no reason whatsoever, destroy, I just call on all you citizens, be, be alert. Look, those, those buildings and that facility belong to you. Keep an eye out, if you see anything, call the police. You know, it's, it's a shame that, that we have people in our city like this. That's all I got to say.
Very good.
You know, I hate Mr. Davis' laugh. I know he's probably frustrated, but so are the people who live on that street that's frustrated too. But I hate for people to try to put us in a box and, and say this is gonna be X, Y, and Z when we don't know if it's gonna be X, Y, and Z at the end of the day. And I, I thought he was intelligent enough to understand that. Undoubtedly, he wasn't, or something, I'm not sure. Because, you know, Brian kept saying, as soon as we present a plan to the design review board, you know, some of that stuff he had on the list might not even be covered. I mean, you know.
Be approved.
Yeah, right, and then it might be something totally different. But he gonna sit here and say, you know, I wanna know today, based on this list. No, we can't tell you that, and I don't know what, what part that he couldn't understand. But at any rate, uh, uh, let me, I'm through, that's enough soapbox today. No, let me just say this, that was a great celebration last night at Convention Hall. I wanna talk about that, the Martin Luther King Celebration. And WMGJ radio station did a beautiful job, even though David is sitting here, and I don't wanna brag on him in his face, but if y'all don't know David, David can sing. And, and David can play too. I didn't know if any of y'all... What we're gonna have to do one day, David, is to get you to sing the Star Spangled Banner and bring a piano here so you can play for us. And, 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 and the guy sitting next to you can do the same thing too. But, but it was a beautiful program last night, a beautiful message. And, and, and again, we wanna thank the radio station. If you'll pass that on to Mr. Donald.
Oh, he'll hear it.
Ah, that's right, okay, I forgot he will hear it, okay.
Were you talking about the next guy to him, Andy, can he sing?
Yeah, you hadn't heard Andy sing?
No, I don't wanna hear Andy sing. No. Hope you're talking about Brian Harvest.
Yeah, well, I, okay.
Yes, okay.
The other guy, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do, I too want to congratulate WMGJ on a fine program last night. It was very well attended, a good message. The entertainment, the people that were there singing the songs, the Negro spirituals, and everything else was just beautiful. David's presentation, David, give me the name of that, from Out of This Rock? What, what, what's inscribed on there?
On the mountain of despair, a stone of hope.
The Stone of Hope, yeah.
A digital preview.
Right.
Yeah, let, let... For those of you who were not there last evening, we opened the program with just a digital slideshow of various points of Martin Luther King's life. We, we saw pictures of him at home and his family, out in the streets, about with people. There are a few scenes where he received his Nobel Prize. So it's a juxtaposition of Martin's private life, his public life, how things may have looked good for him at home with his family. There were still people out there in need. So it was just a visual presentation. I did upload it to YouTube. When you go to the YouTube search bar, just put in MLK slide presentation, and you should be able to find it there. So we just want to thank the city again. Thank you, Councilman Harris, for assisting us getting the projector. So we, we had a good time. Thank you.
Thank you. And you know, if you, if you missed it last night, you truly missed the treat. You know, the, the, the attendance was up over last year, but I do understand, you know, that it varies from year to year, some years up, some years down, but...
Bad weather last year, wasn't it? Wasn't it bad weather last year?
Well, it was something that prevented a lot of people from coming out. But, but what I would say to you is that there should have been standing room only at Convention Hall last night. So we should remember that. All citizens of Gadsden, that we should have packed that building. And I'm very proud of what we, what was done last night. And I too commemorate the man that we celebrated his birthday yesterday. And the other thing I would like to say is, thank you, chief, for your support, the police department's support in East Gadsden and the city. Not, not just East Gadsden, but the city whole, as a whole. Speeding, you know, i- i- is rampant in Gadsden, and we're just looking for the police department to crack down on speeders, you know, and give tickets. That's, that's as simple as that. Peyton Rich, Peyton Road, you know, we've got that unwanted traffic over there from tractor trailers, and he's working with us on that. And that traffic is down, but we need to, you know, be very vigilant, you know, about it. And I, I'm very adamant about the fact, and I don't bite my tongue in saying that all the through traffic that we've got on Peyton Road, you know, we need to slow it down, and we give tickets, because that's just a, a major highway through East Gadsden, and it's a residential community and not a state highway. And that's all I have, thank you.
Mayor.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna go to the podium.
All right.
This is good, this is gonna be good.
Gonna be real good.
You know, we're talking about public safety in the police department. This, this is what I wanna talk about. There's always misinformation out there. Thank goodness we have a chief, you can call him, he calls you back. If somebody wants to see him, he sees them. He keeps you informed on what's happening, and you just don't know what a pleasure that is to have what we got right now, trust me. There was an article in the Sunday paper, Representative Craig Ford, who's a friend of mine, regarding the civil service board and the mayor. I've received several telephone calls the last few days asking me why the delegation will not put the police and fire chiefs under the mayor and the council. Considering that if you need to dismiss one, it can cost the taxpayer and citizens of Gadsden several hundred thousand dollars. I don't believe in wasting taxpayer money on politics. I'm sorry. That is one of the main reasons I ran for mayor. Money being wasted and politicians worrying about votes instead of doing what's best for the citizens. This is not the way to represent our citizens. We currently have about fifteen directors, and they do not have to answer to the civil service board. They answer to the mayor, who is over all the employees and directors. To be clear, I do not wish that the police men and women and fire, and firemen be taken out from under the civil service board. They should stay as they are, and that should never change. They need that protection because of the difficulty of their job. The fire and police departments have a combined budget of about nineteen million dollars and approximately two hundred plus, maybe up to about two thirty or forty employees. The mayor and the personnel department have no input as to hiring or dismissal of the police and fire chiefs, as it does with the other directors. If the chiefs were under the mayor, they would still have, you would have to have what they call just cause, just like any other director. You can't just fire somebody for no reason. And, you know, to, to dismiss a chief, that's just like everybody that works for the city except the police and firemen. But we don't want them under the mayor. They could still go to the EEOC or get an attorney, which a lot of people do. The mayor has to work directly with directors concerning any problems as well as the budget. More calls come to my office about police, public safety, than just about any other departments. I guess public works is probably second, if you miss the trash or something one day. If you get a chief who doesn't want to cooperate, handle problems, talk to the citizens when they come to see him about complaints, and the men don't have the confidence in the chief, then the only recourse is to do something about it. But the way it is now, you have to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to dismiss a chief. And if the chief has been dismissed, he has the right for automatic appeal, if he wants to, to circuit court. And that can cost a few hundred more thousand dollars, and it could go on for two or three years. And we don't need that kind of negative thing happening for year after year after year about a department. Let's talk a minute about the bill that Representative Ford is advertising. He had a joint meeting of police and fire department employees, and out of about two hundred and plus, thirty to thirty-five showed up, including myself. The consensus was, under his new bill, the police and fire members did not want the council to have an appointment to the board. He did have me listed as having an appointment. I don't want an appointment to the board. That, that's not an issue with me. Representative Gallagher said he would not let the proposed bill out of committee to be voted on by the delegation. The mayor and the council are not in favor of the bill at all. We were not notified he was going to advertise the bill. If you count the seven positions on the board in the new bill, the legislative delegation, Ford, Gallagher, Williams, and Norton, would have a majority of the appointment out of the seven members. Is this some kind of takeover of the civil service board by another group? I wonder if he realizes, you know, that he may run for governor. If he gets to be governor, then he might want that appointment back under the governor's office. The last part of this circus is an invoice received by our city clerk in the amount of six hundred dollars from the messenger. Representative Ford, I think, owns the newspaper, The Messenger. And we not gonna waste our money on the bill we don't want, the police and fire do not want. Representative Gallagher will not let the money out of committee. What is the point of this? Politics. Last year, Representative Ford told me he would help with the bill. Representative Norton drew up the bill, and Representative Ford changed his mind. At that point, Representative Gallagher, Senator Williams would not go along unless Representative Ford was gonna be on board too. So it never happened. I have yet to hear a reason why that is so simple it won't be done. I'm sure it has some political ramifications somewhere. The governing body, the city council and the mayor, have passed two unanimous resolutions to put the fire and police chiefs under the mayor, and that's the legislators to remove the chief from under the civil service board. No other city in the state has this situation. It is outdated and was originally set up when you had three commissioners. I'm not gonna sit by quietly. I was elected to do what's best in the interest of the citizens. And, you know, I want the citizens of Gadsden to get the facts. That's why I'm talking today, 'cause every time they are misrepresented, I'm gonna get up and talk about it. This administration, the council, we get along fine. We've done a lot of things that needed to be done. Some of them have been tough decisions. We've been open, transparent, and financially accountable, and we will continue to be, as long as I'm mayor. Anytime something is misrepresented, I assure you, I will make the citizens of Gadsden that they get the facts. Representative Ford represents only a part of Gadsden. Representative Norton only represents a part of Gadsden. Representative Gallagher doesn't represent any of Gadsden. Senator Williams is the only one that covers all the city. If you do not want people making decisions about the police and fire department who have no clue about the daily operations of police and fire, then you need to contact your local delegation. There appears to be two groups who wanna control the civil service board. All I want is to make sure we get a chief who doesn't, who does want to cooperate with the mayor and council. Why should we have to spend thousands and thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to dismiss a chief? This is strictly a management issue. It's not about control and being in charge of anything. Public safety should always be a priority, and you should not have to spend taxpayer money and let politics and control of politicians who are worried about votes and political parties be in charge of our chiefs. Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion with...
Mr. President, I have one other item that I forgot. Please, I'm sorry. District one meeting will be next Monday at six o'clock at East Gadsden Recreation Center. East Gadsden Recreation Center, we do have an item that may, that will be of interest to everyone in East Gadsden that we will be discussing, so I would encourage everyone to be there for this meeting. Thank you.
And I forgot, this is a Thursday coming up, so my meeting will be this Saturday too. Thank you, Billy, for reminding us. But my district meeting will be Saturday morning at ten at Carver, so appreciate that.
I'll entertain a motion with...
So moved.